...regards to the Columbia Pool Park Master Plan and Pool Facility Upgrade. An ad hoc committee was formed to work with park personnel to go over possibilities. The members of the ad hoc committee were myself, Brent Bolander, Allison Jeffrey, and Randy Islow. At this time, I'm going to go to Karen. Yeah, were you going to do the objectives, Karen? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Chad Kennedy, who was the one responsible for putting together the details.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm, are we, are we live with the, okay, all right, wonderful, I'm thrilled to be here this evening with, with you and thank the city staff and parks commissioners for inviting me, Chad Kennedy, landscape architect at Odel Engineering, to present to you and to the public the findings that we made when we reviewed the, the facility, the pool facility. So quickly, the objectives that we'd like to cover tonight are review of the pool's history, and then I'd like to go over an overview of the facility assessment, then introduce you to the three renovation design options that are out there right now, and to review the process thus far, steps moving forward, and finally showcasing how you can get involved in this process. Technical difficulties here for a second, please bear with us while we get the presentation up so you can see it.
Yeah, they're, they can see him, right?
We're going to start with a quick history of the pool. The Columbia Park began construction in 1954, and it was completed in 1957, that's over 60 years ago. And in general, in general, this park is in the same condition, or in the same, it's in the same condition as it was when it started. So the general maintenance and upkeep of this project has kept it open to the public since then, that time. Really, we have city staff to think for the fact that we've been able to use this facility for the last 60 years. It's because of their ability to maintain it in its, in its condition and keep it running is the only reason that we're still, we've been able to use it this long. Frankly, shouldn't have lasted this long, and so I'm thrilled to report that we got a lot of life out of that project. In 2010, we added a splash pad to that facility, and in 2005, some fencing and some roofing and things like that happened. And so, over the years, a few things have been added to it, but in general, it's in the same condition as it was when it was, when it was built. The pool is open generally from the months of June to August, in the summer months, when the, when the children are out of school. And during that time, the city hosts swim lessons and recreational swim, and families are able to do that and join in for a nominal cost currently. Adults 18 up are $3, and the youth 0 to 17 only pay $1 to get in. And this is a real brief history and overview of the project, or of the, the facility, but there's much more information online that you can find at the, at the city's website, it's listed there on your screen, under the FAQs, and there's some other documents there as well. I really suggest that you go to that website and look at the information that's available there online. So that's a little history, but I want to jump into the assessment of the facility. In October 19, 2019, is when the Odel Engineering team got involved with this, this project. And the city staff, recognizing that there were, the lifespan of this facility was, was coming to an end, they, they decided to get experts involved that have some understanding of aquatic centers. And so they brought the Odel team in, and in January of 2020, we were able to visit the site and do an in-depth assessment of everything that was going, or of the existing conditions as they currently are. That assessment revealed quite a few, quite a few code violations, and some of those are minor violations, and some of them are more major violations. But the result is that a great deal of repair needs to happen to repair the old infrastructure and get it up to a condition where we can safely use the facility again. Some of the, again, you can go online and find more of this information, but just a couple of the code violations to refer to. Minor violations are things like the signage, so the chemical rooms need signage, or no diving markers and six-foot, seven-foot depth markers, those kinds of things. Easy to fix, not too bad. There are a few pretty major violations, however, that, that need to be taken care of, things like the decking. The concrete deck around the pool is the original 1957 concrete, so it's cracking and it needs some repair. It needs to be replaced, actually, entirely. The waiting pool for the children, there's a little wall between that and the deeper pool, that's currently not allowed under code, and so that would need to be removed, either a transition between the two, or a complete deck, six-foot deck in between the two pools would need to be done. The building has ADA, needs ADA repairs and upgrades, the restrooms don't have enough toilets, or lavatories, or showers, so there's, there's quite a few things that need to be taken care of in order to get the building up to speed, and the facility in general up to speed. Unfortunately, in its present condition, the facility cannot be reopened, and repairs need to happen before we can get the public back in and utilizing that space. In addition to the assessment that I just referred to, a SWOT analysis was completed. And a SWOT means strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that analysis was done in order to, to kind of take all of this information and break it down into a bulleted, refined document that helps us understand what positives there are with the different types of renovations that are, that are open to us, what negatives there might be, and then what opportunities we might have to, to, to take advantage of the different, different options that we have. So with that being said, well, just quickly, the SWOT analysis also is on the website, and so I'd encourage you to take a look at that, that's a great document to summarize everything that we're talking about tonight. With that, I would like to, to start introducing the public to these different options, these preliminary design options. I want to preface my statements, however, by saying these are three general options. We, we needed to start somewhere, so we're not trying to propose that one is better than the other, we just want to know what the public would like to do with this facility. And so, these are three, three conversation starters, if you will. Option A on your screen is, is an option to keep the facility basically in the same design parameters as it currently exists. So you see there's a little L-shaped pool, the deep end on the little L corner, and then the waiting pool for the little ones on the, on the, the left of that screen there. The pump room would stay in the same place, the building in the same place. The, the difference would be that all of these infractions that I just referred to that were in our assessment would need to be taken care of. So that, everything kind of stays in the same place, it is just upgraded to current standards, and that, the cost of that would, would come in at around $1.8 million in today's dollars. And that doesn't actually include the, any ADA improvements to the parking lot, or the street, or the, the walkways up to the building and that kind of a thing. So there's, there's quite a bit of work to, to be done there. This, this option would preserve the look of the building and everything kind of the same way it has been for a long time. Option B, that you see on the screen here, would entirely remove the, the pool from the facility. And what we would do is replace that pool with a, a modern splash park in its place. There's currently, on the outside of the, the pool, a splash pad that was built about 10 years ago, and that splash pad would be removed in lieu of this larger facility. On the left-hand side of that design, kind of in the orangish area, you can see there would be a new building, new restrooms, and places for picnicking and enjoying that, that open space, even overhead structures for parties and things like that. It would be a much larger open space at, kind of at grade, so that you just walk in there and experience it, the pool would be entirely gone. This also includes an addition of a parking lot to the, to the park to help facilitate users to the park when they come, come to this playground, or to this splash park. The cost associated with this upgrade is a little bit more than the upgrade of the pool, at $2.5 million in today's dollars. The third option is kind of a hybrid between those two. So we leave the, the, the large section of the L-shaped pool, kind of in its place, we take, to take the, the waiting pool out, and we take the little deep L-shaped out, and we refine the pool that's currently there to accommodate more recreational amenities, the more, more of the typical recreation that's being used for currently, which is swim lessons and recreational swim, and we'd leave it at, at those two things. The difference is that where that little L-shaped piece was, would be removed, and we would put a splash pad there. The splash pad on the outside of the current pool would stay in its place, and we would just be adding this as a, as an addition to the pool aquatic facility, so it would be more geared towards what's going on inside of the facility. Again, this would require a removal of the current building, be replaced with a new restroom, new concessions, new ticket office, new lifeguard station, and a new pump room, a pump house for all of the equipment. Again, this also, this design also allows the public to have opportunities for parties and things like that, to rent the space, or to just use it for additional opportunities for open space and, and enjoying their time together as family and friends. This option also requires a parking lot at the, the north end there before you get to the facility, and that's, that, all of that renovation work comes in at a cost of about $6.3 million in today's money. With that, I'm going to turn the time back to our park commissioner, Randy, if you take the, the next couple of slides and talk about the process that we've gone through to this point, and then where we're headed.
Thank you, Chad, and thanks, Brent. I think the slide is about the process of incorporating the community. I want the community to understand and visualize.
Randy, can you turn your mic on so they can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you, Chad, thank you, Brent. Had to turn my mic on. I, I want, I want everyone listening to understand and visualize the process, so we can, so you can be as vocal and supportive during this process as possible. So, so here's a kind of a workflow that describes where we've been so far. So, as Chad mentioned, the studies, and he just went and walked through the plan, or the, the three options. But another, but the other thing that he did is, and you can find this on the website, was he identified, he went through and he did a, an analysis or an audit of the worksite, and he uncovered at least 20 code violations. And so from that, the park, the parks commission was asked to create an ad hoc committee. So the ad hoc committee is me, Randy Islow, Ally, and Brent, and we're working alongside the engineer and the city staff to help lead this process from, from here until, until completion. We, so far, we've done a SWOT analysis, and which is up on the Turlock website. We have also completed a FAQs, which is up on the website, and sometime, hopefully tomorrow or the next day, there will, there will be a survey available to the public, so we can, we can gather as much information and data from the citizens of Turlock. So that leads me to the outreach. So today's outreach, so we're on the outreach phase, where we're, we're introducing formally the, the plan, so thank you again, Chad. And towards the end of today's meeting, we'll open it up to the public for questions, and we'll have a nice Q and A together. But this, this is the point where everyone, we really want your voice to come on now. Because in December, we'll go to the commission presentation, which is the fourth step in the process. The commission presentation will be kind of a summary of all the things that we've gathered thus far, and it will go in front of the Parks and Arts Recreation Commission. And from that, we hope to have a recommendation for city council at the end of January of 2021. Thank you.
All right, and I think I am up next. So the next slide that you will see is actually the city website that we created for this project. And by we, I mean the wonderful IT team here at City of Turlock, who's worked very hard on getting all of these things up for us. This year, COVID changed everything. Normally, when we want to get your opinion from the community, we're going to come out, and we're going to come to your neighborhood, and we're going to sit in the park, and we're going to invite you all out to the park to see us, and to talk to us, and you're going to stick stickers on the wall, and you're going to fill out surveys, and all these different things. Well, COVID makes that really impossible. And so as a committee, we sat down and we talked about all the different ways we could get information to you, and we've tried really hard to include some things on our social media, on our Facebook, in our Instagram for the Parks Recreation, which you can find online. But this website is where all of those things direct you back to. So even if you see that little infographic, it directs you back to the city website, where there's a lot more information for you to become educated on this project with us. Randy said it best earlier this week, we are just community members, we are not engineering experts. So we are also learning about this process as we go, and as we find information useful, we're putting it up for you to find it useful. As you send us questions on Facebook, we're re-updating the FAQ to get that information back out to you. And today, when you ask questions, if the questions are questions we think should be on the FAQ, they'll be added as well. This year, in order to give us your opinion, we really need you to do that digitally. But when you leave a comment on Facebook or on Instagram, that's not something we can tally later for grant funding, or to take back to the city council, who ultimately have the decision in this project. What we'd like for you to do is use the portal that is created through the city website to access a bilingual survey, which you'll be able to fill out starting tomorrow. Right now, the survey is available in English or Spanish, and we'll also put this on our Facebook page. If you don't, if you need an additional language, or an ADA, a combination of some sort, you can always call directly to the Parks and Rec Department as well, and they can walk you through the survey, or take your questions that way. You can also submit a question separate from the survey on the Parks and Recreation website, so if, maybe before you fill out the survey, you really need to know something, and you don't have time to dig through the document, which is quite large, that is there, please ask us questions tonight, or through that survey if you're watching this recorded later. When we talked about how to make this as accessible as possible, one of the things we asked for as commissioners was to record tonight's meeting, so it will be available to watch and to share with people in the community that you know maybe didn't attend tonight, but still want to have this information. You also, if you are an organization, can request information to your organization and direct everybody to the survey site. So when you look at the survey site, it's not very long, it's about 12 questions. We didn't want it to be overwhelming, so we tried really hard to get exactly what we needed from you, and that's for you to tell us your story. The 12 questions that are here are designed for you to tell us who you are, what part of Turlock are you in, are you outside of Turlock? Do you use the facility here, and how often do you use it? What are you using it for? What is it best for for you? Is it how your family keeps cool in the summer, or is it where you get your swim lessons, or do you go there every day because it keeps you out of trouble? We want to know that. It's going to ask you some questions about what would make it more usable for you. Maybe you don't go there, and we want to know why you don't go there. Maybe you live right across the street and you've never been there, and we want to know why that is. So it's a pretty quick survey, English and Spanish, and these are the results that we'll be looking at as a commission to help us make our recommendation to the larger Parks and Rec Board, as well as to the city council in January. So this survey is open until December 4th, which is, is soon. So before you go to the Christmas cruise, which we hope to see you at, we want you to fill out the survey. And at that point, I think I get to hand it back to Randy, are you taking us through questions? Or Brent, someone is taking us to questions.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move, move into the question phase of this. There are certain guidelines, and Carla will read those guidelines.
Members of the public will be given the opportunity to address the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, Columbia Park Master Plan Ad Hoc Committee on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee on tonight's agenda. For those who are interested in addressing the committee, please press the raise hand feature on your screen, or press star nine from your telephone keypad, once the committee chair opens public comment, and before he closes public comment. Members of the public will be allotted three minutes for comments, and will be taken in the order of which requests are received. When it's a member's turn to speak, they will hear an automatic, automated prompt indicating their line has been unmuted, and that is when the three minutes will begin. Lastly, we request members who choose to address the committee to please state their first and last name in the event any follow-up is needed. However, this is not mandatory.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open up the questioning.
Okay, Brent, we have a caller, last name De, DeGracia. Go ahead, caller.
Hi, my name is Jolynn DeGracia, and I live adjacent to the Columbia Pool. I've read and studied all the materials several times, I'm glad that you are now at this late date asking for our opinion, as those who live next to the park. I'm really concerned about the Parks Commission. I, I ask you guys to really, in the future, think about the fact that this is the only park that we have on the West Side. Making it smaller by putting on pay to play activities for all of Turlock is very frustrating for those of us who'd like to see green space on the West Side where people can meet with their families. This is the only place that people can meet on the West Side of Turlock that is free and open. The schools, playgrounds, that's not a place, only what we have there at Columbia Park. I also would ask you to consider the, the, making the green spaces larger by taking out the Bunny, Bonnie Hubbard Building, by possibly buying adjacent homes as we have in the past. I'm also here to ask that you would please have the City of Turlock complete the mural on the outside of the pool structure. It's never been finished, it was, asked the college to do it, I guess, a couple years ago, and the city never paid for it, so the college hasn't finished it. Please start there, that's all I have to ask. The only other thing I would say, and I know I sound a little angry, I'm a little frustrated, is please don't take out our trees, please don't put in a parking lot, and please let us know at some point why it took until a year ago for our city employees, our people at City Hall, to understand that the pool is in disrepair. That's very unacceptable, that's all.
Thank you for those comments. I don't think we're going to be able to address them, but thank you for bringing those things up. I know we have discussed these, pretty much all of them, but at this time. Carla?
It does look like we have one more caller, Galaxy Tab Gil, are you still interested in talking? I'm going to open it up and see if you still are interested. No, it looks like he went off then. Okay, so we have another caller, last name Franco.
Hello.
Oh, wait, Gil, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple, a question, a couple, I think actually Jolynn covered most of what I wanted to say. But now, you're saying that the survey will be coming out, now, it's my understanding that comments and ideas have been coming to you since this process began, so do you have a general idea of what the community, especially the community on the West Side, has, what their ideas have been up to this point?
Hi, Gil, thank you so much for your question. We do have a, a rough log of all the Facebook comments and phone comments who, that come in. The city staff definitely record every call that comes in to them. And I know that a lot of people have reached out to us as commissioners, and we do have a strong sense of what the community would like us to do, but we really need to have that in writing. And I know that sounds very 1957 in 2020, but the more we can document people's opinions and be able to provide that in a follow-up graph to, to council members and to future grantee, granters, because I know that this is something that would have to be fundraised, no matter which option we pick, because we're in that type of city. We really want to echo that you cannot turn your opinion in too many times at this point, so please take the opportunity to do that survey. Also, depending on who you were, I know I personally got a lot of people who approached me, and I don't speak Spanish, and I feel horrible that I could not adequately take their comments. So this survey tool and the email tool give them the opportunity to do that in the language they feel most comfortable in, and so I want to make sure that that's out there again. So yes, we did collect those comments, yes, we did hear you, yes, we want to hear you again. Did that answer your question, Gil?
Well, yeah, kind of, but I guess I want to add to it. I do want to reiterate something that Jolynn said. The people on, on the West Side, we, we really don't care about additional parking spaces in the park, we're kind of, we're kind of used to it the way it is, we'd rather have more of the green space and more family space to enjoy the park. So I think that's, but, but what concerns me, I think, is, is the website itself, it's not always that easy to manipulate, and so, is there another option for people to actually be able to access this survey where it would be a little bit easier for them?
Yes, Gil, you'll be able to go directly to the survey by clicking a link on our Facebook or our Instagram as soon as the survey is live tomorrow morning. And if you are curious at home and you're watching, the reason the survey is not live right this second is because if you ask questions, that make us need to ask more questions in the survey, we wanted the option to do that. But by tomorrow, there should be a link on our Instagram, and we'll be putting that out there where you can share it also, if you have social media, you can copy it and text message it to your friends. It's a very short email address, or website address compared to some of the city addresses that we are all used to from the past.
Okay, I think the last thing I've got for you is, of the comments that have come in, has there been any preference towards any of the three options?
No, we haven't, we have not even talked to one another about which one of the options we're for or against. Surprisingly, it has not come up, and I don't think we're going to do that until we have the surveys, and then we'll probably start discussing A, B, or C. So at this time, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We will keep watching. Thank you.
Okay, now we have caller, the next caller is Franco, Karina Franco. Go ahead, Karina.
Hi, good evening. I did have a question in regards to this, in, there's a lot of, I know COVID-19 is making this much more difficult for you guys to go out in the community and, and have forums and whatnot, but I do have a concern in terms of people going to a link and filling out a survey, I, that's not, the demographics that you're trying to reach out to in the West Side are going to have a challenge doing that. I know you said they can write out some of their comments, well, there'll be Will there be some, can they be written in Spanish? Will there be someone that can give them information in Spanish? Is this presentation, can the presentation that you guys just presented, can that be translated into Spanish? I feel that you're asking for comments from the community, but really you should be reaching this area in particular because this is where it impacts.
So just for clarification purposes, this presentation tonight is available in Spanish, is available in English because we are all English speakers and we could not get a translation service available. We did look into that as a commission and it was not available this evening. Having said that, if you call the city website or if you call the city, you can get a Spanish speaker to assist you with taking your information. Anyone could write in an email in English or Spanish. We take comments in any language, in email for sure, as well as if they wanted to write it down in paper, drop off an actual letter, mail a letter. As long as we've received it by December 4th, we'll try and get that information into our general comments section that we're gathering. We also get copied, if you guys send an email to the Parks and Rec Commission, they do forward those to us and if it needed to be translated, I'm sure that they would translate it for us. So we are trying to gather in both languages. We did try, just so that everyone knows, we tried very hard to go into your community. We tried to go to a day at United Samaritans, we tried to go to a day at West Side Ministries and the timeline did not meet up where we could do that safely with COVID and get you the information. But there are also bilingual flyers that we could provide you if you run an organization on the West Side or if you are part of a church group and you want to, or just a person and you would love to hand out flyers, you can email us and let us know, because we do have that survey in fully Spanish. It's not like they have to go and then select English or Spanish. It's a separate link to give it in a language that is your preferred language. And we absolutely 100% want everyone's opinion to be heard. So if you are someone who would like to share this information in your community and are capable of taking flyers to people, we do have paper flyers too. We're not 100% digital, even though we would love to be.
And where can we obtain the flyers?
I would recommend emailing the Parks and Recreation email address. And I might have to tap Karen to give that email address out loud because I can never remember it. So that they know how many to prepare for you when you come to get them due to COVID. We don't want you to have to like wait in the lobby to get them. Can you give them the correct email address? You can also print them from the website now, but if you needed them printed for you, if you wanted to pick up a handful of them, you can email the Parks and Recs email address, which is, I can't remember. Karen, do you remember? I don't email Parks and Rec.
I'm trying to find that.
She's going to give it to you, I think, right now.
The email is going to be recreation@turlock.ca.us.
For those of you watching at home as commissioners, we do not ever have to do this with the little microphones and the comments, so we appreciate you being patient with us. We are flying by the seat of our pants this evening.
Okay, our next caller is last name Andreid and go ahead.
Hello, so I just kind of want to reiterate what the last person said about demographics of this area. I understand COVID is kind of hindering you guys' like access to this West Side of the community. But if you really take into consideration the demographics, like people on this side aren't always going to have access to those internet sites. And I know you're saying that, you know, we can go if we're a part of an organization or just a, you know, a person to come pick up flyers. But as the ad hoc committee, like shouldn't that be your responsibility to like, you know, hand out flyers? The only reason I even knew about the community pool issue was because of the local pastor in this area, not from the ad hoc committee, not from the city. Like I have to like get information from someone else when, you know, I feel like from the city of Turlock, it should be coming from you to reach this side of town.
I'm on outreach tonight. So we did provide flyers to United Samaritans as well as West Side Ministries in advance of this meeting tonight in an effort to try and get things out to families. We would put them also in food boxes that were going out to homes. If you know of another place that we as an ad hoc committee can reach out to, we are absolutely open to that. That's why we mentioned the flyers. But we can't necessarily go places unless we're invited and people are meeting, which has been the problem that we've had. There aren't a lot of places where people are meeting. But I know I personally, as an ad hoc committee member, if you have a place that I can go and hand out flyers, let me know, I would love to. I think Randy also has said similar things and so has Brent. The main problem we're having is it's COVID and there's not a place where we can hand out flyers or hand out anything.
So you guys couldn't even like mail them out to the side of the community?
I will look into that. I think originally we did ask questions about that and I don't have the information with me tonight. So I will find out that part for you. Thank you for that question.
Okay, thank you, because I feel like if you really want to incorporate the side of town it really affects, it'd be really important to really get them to take that survey. But as of right now, no one really knows about what's going on with the pool. And unless you are attending West Side Ministries or you're attending some of these other places, they're not getting access to the information. And you're giving us less than a month to get the community on this side to understand the situation and even give their opinions when they rise up. Right now, a majority of them don't know what's going on.
Yeah, I think, you know, we debated on when the survey was going to be released and invariably, we decided that it would be after this meeting. At one point, we were going to do it before, so perhaps it would have been more individuals who would have been aware of it or had filled it out. But we felt that this virtual meeting would be more important because then you'd be looking at what we're trying to do or, you know, possibilities of what could happen. And so we're just hoping that people will go get the information off the website and fill out the questionnaires to give us direction. And of course, on the questionnaire, it does say, you know, what district do you live in? Because we really do want to focus on the West Side, in all honesty. We want to make sure that we're getting responses from the people who are in that area of Columbia Pool or Columbia Park itself.
Okay, I just think it's really important that you guys really try to get this side of town's opinion and make sure that they're getting, that they have access to the resources you guys are using. Because right now, the only platform is social media and I understand because of COVID, but I just think like more effort needs to be put into that this side of town gets the information.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, our next caller is going to be last name DeGracio. Okay. Go ahead, DeGracio. I can't get it to work, sorry.
Are we there? Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it's Joe DeGracia. I have three questions. I'll ask one at a time and you can answer it. First thing is the funding aspect. I know our city is kind of lacking there in the funding aspect. There's a $4.5 million difference between option A and option C. Where would this funding come from for these different options?
Well, the process would be that in January, we would have made a decision of one of the three that we think is the strongest candidate. And then we go to the City Council and at that point in time, it's really up to them on the funding. I mean, we're talking about fundraising things within the questionnaire, ways that the community can come together. It is a large amount of money. The City Council will be the one that will determine which one of the three if. And they'll make the call on it. We could recommend one and they might decide on doing something completely different. So we need to be aware of that too.
Okay. Second thing is, as we do the park over, if you've ever driven down Columbia Road at this current time, it's in pretty disrepair and it needs to be improved, especially to allow more traffic. What is the, have you, has that been talked about at any committee?
That wouldn't go towards us and what we're doing right now. I've driven down the road just within the last week and yes, it does need repair. I certainly agree, but that would not be part of our purview with this.
I think that needs to also be considered. Last thing is the parking aspect. I saw the drawing, it enters in on an alleyway. I don't believe that's allowed. I don't believe that can be done because the alleyway isn't accessed for many of the public or the people that have houses along there, me being one of them. And I don't think there's a park in the area that has an alley access into a parking area. So that's something definitely to be considered.
I think the alley, the alley being put into it, and Chad could address this, but I think that's just a point of reference. I don't think it's really a part of the actual plan itself.
If you go back to your picture.
Okay, Chad, you want to take a look at that? Okay.
Sure. The graphics that are being shown there are really diagrammatic. We haven't looked into the feasibility of the connections at this point. It either has to come out to Columbia Avenue or to the alley to fit in a small, a park, as small of a parking lot as possible to not impact the park, but at the same time, provide the necessary ADA access and facility requirements related to parking. So that would definitely be looked at. And if it can't go out in the alley, it would pop back off onto Columbia Avenue.
That's what I would probably say. It has to have access in to and out of Columbia, off of Columbia. All right, thank you.
Okay, next we have caller Galaxy Tab Gil.
Hello again. Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yeah, a couple of things. Have you, I know you said you had considered, you're sending out flyers and stuff to West Side Ministries and Samaritans. Have you just considered having an open meeting at the park? I mean, it's pretty wide open. Right now, parks are closed, but I don't think you really need a permit to do with, put together a quick little meeting out in the park. I think that would be a good place to access some of the community in that area. There's plenty of room for, so you could have your social distancing. So I don't know, maybe it's something you want to consider. Because I feel just like some of the previous speakers, having the people in that neighborhood access your websites and your surveys, I think is going to be a little bit tough. So we need to do whatever we can to make it easier for this neighborhood to speak up and say, hey, this is what we like. I mean, personally, I don't think we're going to, we're going to be interested in any additional parking lots in the park. The option B, I don't think that's going to fly at all. So, you know, I think these are things that need to get out and people need a chance to comment and we have to make it as easy as possible for them to do that. Whatever we've got to do, that's what we need to work on. Thank you again, guys. You guys, thank you for the work you are doing. I appreciate some of the comments that you made earlier, Brent. This neighborhood is the one that really should have the most input because it's going to affect us the most. And, you know, there's plenty of other parks for everybody else to go play and do whatever and have their big dicks and have their parking lots. Columbia Park's all we got, folks, so I don't want to see us lose our pool and end up with additional parking lot space. Thank you.
I think we're going to hand this one off to Allison to answer, but I do want to say, I noticed at the beginning of your comment, you said, we talked about getting to West Side Ministries. West Side Ministries has already been given flyers for distribution, as has United Samaritans. So those two places have distributed flyers. If you have an additional place in addition to those two places, that's what we would be seeking additional flyers for. And Allison, will you answer the rest of that question?
Yes, council member is scared. Just to clarify regarding your question about having a public meeting or gathering in a park. Unfortunately, due to COVID and the state guidelines, we're unable to advocate in that particular fashion just because of the focus on reducing the spread of COVID. We are limited in a variety of meeting formats, as you well know, unfortunately, with our, even with our council meetings. And so that is absolutely a disappointment for all of us because as the ad hoc committee described, that would normally be our primary way of reaching out to the community. And, but I think one thing that has come out and I had jotted down a note, I think that we could easily post up in the park itself, some bilingual poster information so that by chance if people are visiting the park and they have an interest in this, we can have information there explaining that. And then I think it really comes down to the entire community, particularly people who have been interested in this conversation from the beginning, to partner with us and help us get the word out. We are relying on that, given the challenges with COVID. And so if we can be of assistance in that way and providing information or support, we are happy to do that. We have done so with those organizations who have been engaged with us proactively. We recognize that there may be some groups that we've missed and so we're happy to get that information to them as quickly as possible. So I hope that answers your question. It's probably not the answer you want, given our, you know, the fact that we have to deal with COVID, unfortunately. But we are looking for creative ways to engage with the community. And so we're open to ideas and suggestions, but that's where we're at with the efforts that we've done thus far.
Okay, we have another caller, last name Franco. Go ahead.
Hi, I have some more comments, listening to the conversation here. Has there been any talk of maybe having an extension to the December 4th date? I'm really concerned about moving forward without community input, specifically for the West Side community. Many of my, many of the residents in that neighborhood don't even have a clue of what's going on with the Columbia Pool or the park. So it just really concerns me that we're moving forward without their input. I'd like to know how many people you guys have input from that actually live in that community and are being impacted. Many of the callers have already stated a lot of the things that I would say. I mean, we don't have very much green space in that area. This is one of the only parks, or the only park in this neighborhood. So it, without having true community input, it's just really difficult for me to feel that we're going to make the right decision. The other thing is door-to-door campaign. I understand that we are doing this social distancing and we're trying to not, you know, create space where people are gathering, but has anybody even gone door-to-door, dropping off flyers, talking to people about what's going on and why this is going to occur in the way that you guys are talking about it tonight? I can tell you, Spanish speakers are not going to jump onto a survey. That's going to be really challenging. So again, is there any possibility of doing some sort of extension? And I just don't know how we move forward without really speaking to those individuals that it impacts. And I'd love to know if the people even around the park really know what's going on. Because I could tell you a few streets down, people have no clue.
I think that we're doing the best we can because if we don't move, then we're going to be in a situation where there's not going to be any kind of water-type facility over there for the kids. Because bottom line is, it's not going to open the pool. It's essentially condemned. And that's why we're kind of trying to move as fast as we can with the possibility that the City Council will then look at it, recognize the urgency, and then perhaps help us with funding, et cetera, to maybe get this to come through. But as far as the outreach is concerned, that's a very tough one. I do know that Allison has really worked very hard at trying to contact individuals to try to get that information out. And alls we can do is rely on people like you that are in that in that community over there. It's very hard to do it in this COVID situation, to have an outdoor meeting or anything like that. Ally, you want to?
I think I will add, I think I've heard a couple times throughout tonight's questions, I haven't heard anything yet. That is because this is the first meeting where we've asked you to give your opinion. So don't feel alarmed if you're like, but I haven't had the time to get my opinion yet, so you don't have any opinions. We know we don't have any opinions. That's why we wouldn't give Gil our recommendation. We don't have any information yet. If it gets to December 4th, and we still don't have any opinions, I guarantee you, we're going to have an extension. But we don't want to give an extension now, and then have lots of opinions by December 4th, and delay the pool if it's not necessary. A lot of people, when they hear us up here on the committee, keep in mind that this commission is community volunteers. So what we do is ask you to become engaged. If you feel engaged, please engage others. And that's the only way that these community outreach things work. The minute they will let us sit in the park and gather opinions, I guarantee you Karen and Allison are going to call me, because I ask about it all the time. We also cannot go door-to-door right now. By state guidelines, it is not recommended to go door-to-door. So we're kind of stuck in a bind, because as a commission, we are held accountable to the rules that are set by those tier system, right? That tier system, it applies to us, too. And I cannot tell you the number of times that we've sat in a meeting and discussed how disappointed we are that we can't go into the West Side and ask. So all we can ask is people who are already in the West Side to keep asking over and over again for us. If you have people who won't fill out the survey, and you know they can't fill out the survey, and you've got your phone there, the survey is not set up that you cannot take it more than one time. Feel free to survey with your phone, ask another person, help them take it, too. Help your friends, help your neighbors, help your grandma, help everybody take it, because the goal is to get you to take this survey or to get the information to us. Now, you can even take it. If you want to print 25 surveys, you want to check the boxes with an ink pen and drop them off, we'll count them, we'll figure it out. But we have to ask you to help us, because we are only three people in a very large city. We can't go door-to-door through every neighborhood during COVID. They won't let us sit in the park. Please, 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 help us spread the word. That's why we're asking. We know that not everybody looks at social media. So when I'm out there on social media sharing, I'm hoping I'm getting someone's aunt, and someone's cousin, and someone's brother, so that they will all share the information. But if you're feeling panicked tonight...
And I understand you guys are volunteers, and I'm not trying to, like, leave you guys with this full responsibility. I'm just trying to give you some understanding of where the residents may be in this process, and how you guys can also facilitate this conversation with the community. I'm not putting it on you three to, you know, do the door-to-door campaigning, or do, you know, I'm just giving you information that I feel is important. And I feel that if we can work together in some way, in some capacity, and also with the city council members that will be making the decision in terms of funding, you know, how are they going to also bridge this conversation? It also should be, they should be included in this, and I'm sure they will, but in the conversation of getting the information out there, they should be part of this, as they will be making funding decisions, we hope.
So that was actually something we didn't cover at this meeting, because I think we covered it the last meeting. When this process happens, an ad hoc is formed, we form a recommendation as an ad hoc. We take it to the Parks and Recs Commission, and we say, based on the opinions of our community, this is the one with the strongest, maybe, community output. This is the one that's most financially feasible. This is the one that has the coolest features. We're going to give them all the different options, right? It's not necessarily a this-is-it conversation. Then they're going to have, we're going to have, that meeting is open to the public, just like this one, and you give feedback, and then we're going to vote on a recommendation. But we're just a recommending body, right? So then we vote on the recommendation, and just like Randy mentioned in his timeline, then we're going to take that to city council, and we're going to present, this is what we've done, this is what the community said or didn't say, this is what we know from talking to them, and from Facebook, and from emails, and all these different things. And we're going to give them a recommendation. They can also take public comment at that time. They can decide with our recommendations to go the way that we recommend or the way that we don't. And then they can set a whole nother timeline. Our timeline right now is just based on the fact that we did not want the pool to sit unopenable forever, because one of the things we did hear loud and clear from the West Side community over summer was open our pool back up and get a water feature back running. So we hear that voice very loudly, and we are trying to be mindful of the timeframe impacting which summer the pool would open up in, in the future.
Okay, it looks like we don't have any other callers.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close down this virtual meeting this evening. And again, it will be online if people want to look at it later on. So, thank you.